Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the Board are open to the public and media, consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the clerks of Delaware Township, East Amwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard, as shown on the agenda. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield, Dr. Charney.
Here.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Fowler. Mrs. Kellogg.
Here.
Mr. Nickel.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell, or Mrs. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
And Mrs. Hughes.
Here.
Can we rise for the flag salute, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion, please, for approval of the February 14, 2022 minutes?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield.
Yes.
Dr. Charney.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes.
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. Can I have a motion now for the February 28, 2022 minutes?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield.
Yes.
Dr. Charney.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson. Mrs. Kellogg.
Yes.
Mr. Nickel.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes.
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. We have two items of correspondence noted on the agenda, and then we'll move on to our student council report. Elena and Jasmine?
Just Elena tonight.
Just Elena.
Good evening, everyone. So, to start off, earlier this month, for three nights, students performed this year's musical, Les Miserables. It was a great way to start off the month strong. Music continues this month with the instrumental string orchestra concert on March 16th and the instrumental concert band concert on March 23rd. Best of luck to our musicians on their performances. The Red Cross Club had their third and final blood drive of the year on March 14th, where they collected 55 units, which will go to 165 patients. Tomorrow, on the 22nd, Hundred and Central is hosting the annual Hundred and County College Fair from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. More than 110 colleges, technical schools, and post-secondary options will be in attendance to share opportunities with our students. Furthermore, senior central practices have started. We have 10 contestants who are excited to compete in this parody pageant. We're currently working on advertisements. Students who are interested in assisting with this component of the show are invited to join student council on Wednesdays during Block 5 for weekly meetings. We're looking forward to putting on the show on May 13th. That's all for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Elena.
Thank you, Elena.
Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Moore.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. So, a couple of items on my report tonight, but Heather's really our headliner tonight, so I'm going to turn it over to her as soon as I can. Hib and suspension report. You do have some action that we're requesting tonight on HIBs incidents that were presented in closed session last time. We also have our student recognition on here, our Students of the Month from February. And I want to mention as well, two National Merit Scholarship finalists, National Merit Scholarship finalists here, Ayman Sabawi and Alan Yu. We're going to have some folks out to you next month to say hello, including, I think we're working on getting more of the cast members and crew, et cetera, from Le Minis to come out and say hello to you also, after last week's incredible performance from our two students. The budget is our key item tonight. So Heather's here to present the preliminary budget. Now, with your approval tonight, that allows her to submit the tentative budget to the state for review before we have our hearing and your final approval. So, tonight's approval doesn't adopt our budget, it just allows Heather to take the next step in its, next required step in its development. She'll cover details, and I'll have a little bit more to say when she's done. But aside from just our regular admiration for the good shape that we're in for all of the work that Heather and her folks and all the work the business department has always done over the years, we do want to offer a little bit of a concerning preface to all of this. We've seen cuts this year. We were expecting state aid cuts, and we knew that was coming, and Heather worked that into her budget preparation. But we also saw cuts as a result, well, it's really a reduction in aid from, or reduction in the levy from last year as a result of Chapter 44 health care plans that were mandated by the state, and the quote "savings" that we realized as a result of those plans, which aren't really savings at all. So, I will share a bit more about that afterwards. I want to let Heather share all the details with you first, though. So Heather, it's all yours.
Let's see if that works.
Yeah, it's, the screen's buzzing in and out a little bit.
But I think I did attach it to the agenda if you need to follow along.
I've emailed you all a PDF of it as well, if the agenda PowerPoint is difficult for you in any way. So if you check your email, you'll see a PDF there.
So, as Dr. Moore said, this is the proposed budget. The purpose of this budget is to get our preliminary budget to the county office before it's submitted to the state of New Jersey for approval. So what happens is, we'll approve a preliminary tonight, it'll go to the county office for approval, they'll determine whether or not we're within the guidelines. Once they've approved it, it then comes back to us, and we'll do a final adoption on the 25th of April at our public hearing. So, if I could figure out how to do this, I'm, oops, let's go down. There we go. So, just as a general overview, what is a budget? The budget is our tool that we use as our roadmap within the district for our financial plan, and we use it to make, to determine our facilities. We support our facilities, we support educational programs, and then we also support our staff. So, the financial plan is basically the total operation of the district. So, when we, in February, we adopted preliminary budget objectives and the things that we look at when we start to put a budget together, what are our goals and objectives and things that we want that are important to support during the budgeting process. So the first is, we want to continue to implement innovative programs, ones that are in compliance with all mandates and requirements as determined by the Department of Education. In addition to that, we want to make sure that our students have a full range of access to programs, and that's for all students, that not only deal educationally, but also for equity wellness and personalization. So we want to be sure that they're all, all their needs are met, and that's all discussed in the budget, and now it's going to play. Sorry. We want to sustain and nurture our staff. We want to make sure that they have the programs that they need to continue to grow and do their professional development. And we want to make sure that we still maintain a nice facility. We'll talk about that in more detail as we go forward. I'm not touching. When we talk about the long-range facility plan and we talk about how we go forward with our planning process and our capital improvements. But all of that is really important as we plan our budget and plan for our future. Our final objective is probably one of the most important, because not only do we want to do all of those wonderful things we talked about in the previous slide, but we want to do it fiscally responsibly. So we want to try to ensure that we're able to balance all of the needs of our students and our facilities and our staff, and also be able to meet the needs of keeping our tax levy changes as minimal as possible. There are several things that we do. We determine that we have priorities within our district. The state of New Jersey nicely calls them statement of priorities, and there's five of them. And there are several things that we look in within each of them. So the first statement of, the first district priority is to maintain our schools. And what that means is to enhance our campus security, ensure that we focus on student and staff wellness and programming. We want to continue our distinction towards anti-bias equity and other priorities and mandates. We want to maintain our student support services for the diverse student population that we have here on campus, and we want to maintain a comprehensive program for curricular offerings. The next, we want to make sure that we continue to raise our standards and expand opportunities to support students at risk, who are at risk of underperformance, continue to expand innovation aligned with our district priorities, which are some of the things we talked about earlier. We want to maintain our continuing growing ELL population, and you've heard many directors come up and talk about the diversity of those students and how important they are to what goes on here. We want to extend, expand our magnet and individual college and career exploration opportunities. We just talked, we have a college presentation that we have going on next week, which is really important for our students. We want to maintain a comprehensive program of studies, make sure the students have many opportunities to select their individual programs. And we want to align assessments and other measurements to our equity goals and close achievements, and still be able to do that as we're coming out of this COVID pandemic. So it's kind of been a little bit of a challenge to get all of those things in line. Another one of our priorities here at Central is to build professionalism, or expanding classroom and school culture, so that they're more attuned to student social and emotional needs. We utilize data from student observations and evaluations to frame our professional learning communities. We increase capacity for technology integration. We're providing expanding opportunities for teacher leadership, and working closely with a new committee in determining staff-wide literacy on racism, bias, and prejudice in support of the anti-racism and anti-bias work that we're doing. And again, to continue to support our staff as we come out of this pandemic. And then finally, our goal is to protect our investment. Our investment not only is our facilities, but our investment in our students. So we continually evaluate and determine what we need to do to update or to improve our physical facilities. We're continuing to support our staff and continue facilities improvements to increase our campus security. And we do all of these types of things and look to control to support a minimum tax levy And after we do all of that, then we start to plan for our future. We continue to review and analyze program and staffing against enrollment projections. We'll talk about that pretty soon as we start to get more into the numbers. We're going to monitor all mandated assessment results and other data related to student access and success for curriculum alignment. And we're going to continue to explore and identify opportunities to enhance individual learning for our students. As we start to look at some of the enrollment projections and as we continue to build our budget, you can see we're trending downward. We're continuing to have declining enrollment, which challenges some of the things we have the opportunities to do in the classrooms, and we are continuing to project an additional 38-student decline next year. The population of those 2,500 students, we are projecting 606, our ninth graders, 601 10th graders.
Bless you.
673 11th graders and 636 12th graders. The trend has typically been the last few years, the reason for the declining enrollment, we're graduating a larger 12th grade class than we're bringing in in a freshman class. So that has been the trend over the last couple of years. Of those students that we do have on campus, we also have 33 students that were projected to be out of district next year. Those are special education students that are either in private placements or they're at other LEAs in the state. We do have 48 shared-time students, and those are shared-time students that are at the VOTEC. We have 71 general education students. Those are the students that are participating at the academies, also at the technical school. Those are the biomedical academies and those programs that are offered there. In addition to that, we have 88 part-time students. Again, those are shared-time students that are here for half of their day, and the other half of their day they're at the VOTEC. And we do have one charter school student that is at a district. So there are several steps in building the budget, and we stick to a pretty tight timeline in terms of building the calendar and the steps that go into building the budget. The first, and this is an ongoing process, this doesn't just happen at budget time, but we evaluate the spending and we identify any additional needs or evolving needs. The budget, if you think about it, we do it almost 18 months in advance of it actually being implemented. So there are a lot of things that change during that time. So this is a continually ongoing process. Once we start to look at those things, we give each of the budget, each of the department heads, including supervisors, get budget documents that go out to all of the departments. It includes their current year expenditures, their audited expenditures, and a projection for next year. They fill out that information and provide it back to the curriculum director, who goes over it much more closely with them in terms of aligning it to the district initiatives from the curriculum perspective. And then all of that information then comes back to me at the end of, it's right before our holiday break in December. The budget, the board papers go out in November, and then I get all of the information back to start to crunch the numbers in December. Once we get those back, we start to compare it to year-over-year. We don't get our state aid numbers for a very long time, so this is a lengthy process to look at programs, to look at things that are changing, look at enrollment, and determine where the initiatives are for the upcoming school year. We do that as an administrative team, and we also do that individually with each of the directors. Once all of these, this information is pulled together, we kind of have to wait a little bit. And that's waiting for the governor's address and his state aid announcement. Typically, it's the last Tuesday in February. This year, he delayed until the first Tuesday of March, so we did have a two-week delay. And he was kind enough to give us an extra week in submitting our budget, so we did get a little extra time. Sadly, we didn't get the numbers we were hoping for, and we can talk about that a little bit later as we go on. Once those numbers come back, you take a look at what you thought it was going to be, because it's been pretty unpredictable. We've been trending down substantially, so we try to make an educated guess at that and hope for the best. Once those numbers come in, then you scramble to try to figure out where you can make up some of the loss in state aid. And during this entire time, in January, we have what's called, we have a state budget software program that we input the data into that captures a lot of statistical information. It's not just revenues and expenditures. Once we go through all of that, then we're here tonight to adopt the preliminary budget to go to the county office for approval. The biggest piece, obviously, of our budget is funding for instructional needs. I'm really sorry. Those things are curriculum development to match state standards and align strategic priorities with wellness, classroom instructional materials and software, so those are our textbooks and pens and pencils and software in order to maintain what goes on in each of the classrooms. I have no idea what's going on. It also includes staff professional development and memberships, so we continually are doing training with the staff. We have had some grant support this year, but in many years, most of that falls on our budget. And also, we support membership in each of the professional organizations that our directors and our staff are members of. We also have equipment maintenance and repairs that we maintain in our budget, consumable supplies, those things that we have to repeat and purchase each year. Again, purchase professional services, if we have someone come in to do presentations or if we have, you know, software development or training, those types of things are all purchased, professional services. And of course, the students that do field trips and competitions, student assessments, technology and research, and also our co-curricular in athletics all fall under the instructional part of the budget. I'm not sure how to make it stop. The other components of the budget are other departments. We have a student support services, which includes our guidance department, our counseling department, and our school nurses. We have school and district administration, which is the superintendent's office, the business office, and the principal's office. Those all fall under school and district administration. And we have staff salaries, health benefits, employer taxes, employer share of pensions, transportation, which is a very large piece of our budget, because we not only transport our 2,500 students, but we transport about 6,000 students on a daily basis, as we support our sending districts as well. We have campus security and staff, building and buildings and grounds maintenance, which includes the cleaning, the utilities, also the mowing and the outside maintenance. We also have legal guidance, all of our insurances, communication with stakeholders. We have human resources, which is the function of the hiring and benefits and all of the employee, at the employee aspect of the business. And then the business function, which is banking, payroll, purchasing, and those types of things all flow through the business office. So there are two pieces to any budget. This works similar to your checkbook at home. You have revenue, hopefully, and then you have expenditures. The difference between a school district and a business is that our revenues always equal our expenditures. It's a hard concept to handle. Most of us from business, you know, operate revenues and expenses in a profit or a loss, and you're able to increase your revenues or decrease your expenses. Unfortunately, in a school district, we don't have a lot of opportunity to increase our revenues. You know, we kind of wish we were a little more creative, but what we have to do is we really have to manage the expenditure side of the house. So of our revenue sources, you can see the biggest piece of this pie is the local tax levy. 80.49% of our budget comes from taxpayer dollars. So this is a really sensitive issue, and this is one we're very mindful of as we build a budget in the state of New Jersey, because sadly, we are not funded in any other manner. And we'll talk about that more as we talk more about where our state aid numbers come from. These are the pieces that make up our revenue budget. We have a budgeted fund balance, and what that is, is we talked about our revenues equal our expenditures, and if they don't, if our revenues are higher than our expenditures, we call what, we get what's called a fund balance. It's not a profit or a loss, it's a fund balance. By law, we're allowed to keep a certain percentage of that, and there are other caps outside of that number, which help us in an emergency situation like we had with Hurricane Ida. The rest of it, we budget to give back to taxpayers in a future year. So that number is between $3.7 and $4 million over the last five years. This year, it's up about $188,000 year-over-year to $4.08 million. We do have our local tax levy, and that's the, what you saw, the big green piece of the pie is our local tax levy, and that comes directly from our regional sending districts. You can see we're up $719,000 year-over-year. By law, we're allowed to increase the tax levy 2%. That is not 2%, because as Dr. Moore mentioned, we received an assessment from the state of New Jersey of $416,000 based on a new law that went into effect. It was called Chapter 44. And what Chapter 44 did, it, the Senate negotiated with members of the bargaining unit, a new health benefit plan. And in the law, it said that for every penny that is saved or dollar that's saved by implementing that new plan goes back to the taxpayers in taxpayer relief. The challenge there is identifying that number, and we'll talk more about how challenging it is and why it is so skewed in our particular situation, because we didn't save money. And I do have, we do have an appeal in with the state of New Jersey, but in the meantime, we have to submit the budget. So this budget is 416,000 or 1.2% of our prior year tax levy. So not only do we lose that this year, we lose that in perpetuity, because each year we're allowed to build on that tax levy. So as you can see, because the funding is going down, the next, in the next section of this, you can see that we're down $257,000 year-over-year in state aid. So as that number goes down, we have to rely more and more sadly on the tax levy. And if they're going to start to take the tax levy away, we're going to be, we're going to have some tough times ahead. So there's a lot of planning and a lot of work that goes into making sure we stay, stay within our means. The other line of this are things such as investment interest. You'll see that down year-over-year because our interest income is down because the tax, the interest rates are down, so we do take a hit there as well. The next section talks about state aid. There are two pieces. The first line, where we were down $257,000 year-over-year, I'll show you a slide later, we're down 1.26, 1.2 million dollars over the last five years in reduction in state aid. And that has to do with the new state aid funding formula and what the state has decided we can, we need in order to run our district. And federal aid, that's specific semi, specifically a semi-program that we participate in, and it's a small amount, and the state provides that information as well. The next section of the slide is our debt service fund, and we have a great story to tell here. On December 15th of 2021, we paid off our debt service. So basically, Hundred and Central paid off their 25-year mortgage. What that means to the taxpayers of our regional sending districts is, we don't have to raise that in taxes anymore. So the really good news is, is that's instant tax relief for everybody. What we've done is, we've been able to maintain our facilities and our building programs and all of our maintenance programs by really good planning, by administration and business administrators over the last 20 years. So it's put us all in a really good position to not have to go back out for referendum, which means we don't have to take another mortgage in the near future. And then, the reserves, we have what's called capital reserves, and this is what we'll talk about as we go forward. This is us investing in ourselves. We don't have to go out for referendum for these things, but we do have money in what's called a capital reserve, and we budget each year money out of that fund to do capital projects. I'll show you the specifics as we go further. That doesn't raise taxes, and it's not mandated. That doesn't mean because we budgeted it, we have to do it. When we start to go through the process and determine whether or not it's a project we really want to do, or if the numbers don't come in properly, we just don't do it. So that's the good news. It gives us flexibility with our own money, and if we don't need it, we don't, we don't move it from capital reserve into our budget. So overall, all of our funds are down $3.8 million in revenue year-over-year. So if you remember what I said, our revenues have to equal our expenditures. So if our revenues are down $3.8 million, so are our expenditures. It's pretty staggering. Expenses that are included in our general fund are all of the instructional programs, special education programs, instructional support services, which is our IMC, our counseling services, our health office, curriculum supervisors, and staff training. Our administrative expenses are the superintendent, principal, human resources, business office, and the IT department. And then we have a whole section of our budget for operations, which is our maintenance, our custodial, our grounds, and our security folks. And then transportation, employee benefits, equipment. We do have what's called Fund 12. If we, it's an asset, if you will, any piece of equipment that we purchase over $2,000 has to be purchased out of Fund 12, which is a capital asset program. And then, of course, we have capital projects, and that's the 4.2 million dollars I started to discuss a little bit on the other side. If you look at this, we're really well proportioned. If you, if you take a look at our pie, 27% of our budget is spent in our regular education program. We have other expenditures that are included, and what these departments are, the things that I showed you, it's probably easier, I wish I could do these side-by-side, to talk about the expenditures. Sorry, individually. So we have benefits, we have equipment, that's our Fund 12 that we talked about, that's a very small piece, capital projects, that's our 4.2 million dollars that we talked about. We have transportation overall, which is about 6% of our budget, admin, which is about 5%. But of course, obviously, the biggest piece is spent on instructional, which is a really good, that's where we want to see our money being spent. This is also a staggering slide. When we look at the biggest piece of expenditures in the district, it's employee salary and employee benefits. Of our budget, 78.4% of our budget is spent on employee salaries and benefits. So as we talk about the benefits continuing to go up, it becomes more and more challenging to be able to keep all of these things in line. So when the state aid starts to tell you that you have savings in places that you don't, and reduce your tax levy dollar-for-dollar, it becomes really, really challenging. We do things on our own in order to control health benefits, and that's where our savings came from. Our savings came from what we do as a district to control costs, and we went out for proposal for our health benefit costs and saved a substantial amount of money. The projection was almost a million dollars over a year. It just happened to coincidentally fall in line when the state implemented their new law. So they assumed that that savings was due to the new law and not our own ability to manage our own expenditures. And it was just the convoluted way in which they calculated it. They didn't just focus on those people that the new law pertained to, they took an average of all of our change. So we are fighting it. I don't know how far we're going to get. I was hopeful to have an answer tonight, but I don't, so this budget doesn't include These are the big pieces that contribute to our budget, special education and out-of-district costs. Special education and out-of-district costs. We follow student IEPs. We do, we do a really good job of managing these costs and educating these students, but it is a, a, a big piece of our budget. School security measures are included, obviously, our salaries, we just talked about, and health benefits. Transportation, we've had a challenge this year in making sure that we have enough drivers and equipment to pick up students on a regular basis. We've, we've come up with some pretty creative ways in order to get that done, and it's still a challenge every day. The state of New Jersey not only has made it difficult for new drivers to get licenses because they're closed, but it's also made some of the requirements quite hefty for new drivers to be able to get their credentials to be able to drive. And we understand that, we want safe drivers, but at the same time, we want an opportunity to get them out there and, and, and take the test, and that's been a challenge. So we've been forced to do some creative things, and so far, it's working. Other employee benefits that are included in, in part of that, seventy-eight point four percent is unemployment expenditures. We are self-funded here. Our pension plan, we contribute to the PERS, our non-certificated staff pensions. Workers' compensation and disability insurance as well falls into those areas. The next piece of this slide is, is where we kind of all, like, kind of drop our jaw and go, wow, this is really what's been going on for the last six years. Beginning in the eighteen, nineteen school year, the new law and the new funding formula went into effect. So you can see, over the last several years, we've lost one point two six six million dollars in our state aid. And what that's, what that has meant is the district's had to be really conscientious, and we've had to really do a lot of planning, and we've limited, we've had to be limiting in some of the things we've been able to do, because this is a big number. The tax levy, again, can only go up two percent. So that really is a challenge in order to keep all of this under control. And then you'll see the little piece, the Chapter Forty-four, I'm calling it an assessment because I don't agree. It was four hundred and seven thousand dollars. You see four hundred and sixteen there is because what they did is they took it out of the twenty-one, twenty-two number. That twenty-one, twenty-two number is the one we're living with right now. So not only did we lose the four hundred and six thousand dollars on the current year, but we lost two percent growth for twenty-two, twenty-three. So that's where the four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars comes from. So in the last six years, we've lost one point, almost one point seven million dollars. The one that hits us harder than the, the state aid cut is the tax levy cut, because it not only hurts us this year, it hurts us forever. So it really, really limits what we're able to do in the future. Some of the things that we do to be able to maintain our programs and to be able to keep moving forward with all of the initiatives is we, we, we do a lot of creative things within, within Central. We do a lot of things outside of Central, one of which, we talked about bidding the, the healthcare costs. We do that on a regular basis, and we hope we're able to prove that we did it and the state didn't. We have shared services initiatives. We, we participate in E-Rate, we participate in an ACT program, which is an energy service program. What they do is they bid large bulk amounts of energy, and we're able to take advantage of large programs instead of trying to do it individually. Aces is the same thing with our gas and utilities. We do cooperative purchasing, so we purchase through Hundred and County ESC or Middlesex County ESC. We, we purchase under state contracts, things that are able, we're able to take advantage of bulk buying, if you will. The state allows us to do that. We do shared services. We have our nurses work also at the Polytech, so we're able to share some of our own resources with other districts as well. Our health insurance, workers' comp, and auto insurance are all from insurance pools. That's where we were able to save a big amount of money. We went, actually, for health benefits, we went into an insurance pool. It's called a school health insurance fund from a private plan, and that gives us more flexibility going forward, and we get to reap the benefits of a positive experience rating. We have inter-local services agreements with our, with our local, for our local resource officers and our Class Three officers. We do that through Raritan Township. We have joint transportation agreements. We did talk about, we transport six thousand students. We do that because we transport all of the students for Delaware Township, East Amwell, Flemington, Raritan. The only ones we don't transport are Reddington, they do do their own transportation. And we do that through something we call the JTC, which is our own Joint Transportation Commission. Hundred and Central has partnered fifty percent with Flemington, Raritan on that, and there is a board, and we do make decisions, and we do vote, and we do do some wonderful things to be able to control our, our transportation costs. We also, and, and we do also contract the transportation for East Amwell and Delaware Township. When we have students that are going out of district, if we're unable to provide transportation ourselves, we do purchase those through other joiners or other jointures through Hundred and County ESC or other districts, where we're able to possibly put one of our students on a bus with students from other districts and share those costs. So those are all things we look at to help control our, our budget. This slide talks a little bit about the Chapter Forty-four assessment. What the state of New Jersey is saying, there was a new law that was passed that was negotiated a, a, a specific type of health benefit plan, which kept the benefits within a certain parameter that wasn't supposed to be as robust as the traditional plans that we have in the district. And in exchange for that, the contribution from the employee perspective becomes a percentage of their salary and a much smaller percentage of their salary, whereas Chapter Seventy-eight, which was the previous law we were operating under, it was a percentage of the cost of the premium, and the percentage of the cost of the premium was higher. So basically, what happened, not only did, the assumption was that the cost of the plan, because it wasn't as robust, was going to come in much more favorably from a cost perspective, and it didn't. It came in approximately fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars less than our most robust plan. So what that means to us is we really, the loss isn't necessarily on the cost of the plan, the loss is on the amount of contribution we're not getting. So from an employee perspective, it's a positive thing, you're getting a robust plan at a cheaper cost, which was a piece of the goal as well. But what's happened is the district has had to absorb that, and what compounded the problem is the law specifically said, this is going to save the district's money, this is going to save the public entity's money. When it does that, the law says the money needs to go back in tax relief. The challenge was, the Senate didn't talk to BAs when they determined how they were going to calculate the savings. And they didn't really talk to anyone, not specifically BAs. They made a, a political choice and passed a political law, and we were absorbing the financial impact of that. And again, the reason we have a substantial savings is because we were good stewards and went out and bid our plans and made a change, change to a less expensive plan, if you will. And they accounted all of that savings to the new law. So that's not what happened. I've been able to prove, I've taken those one hundred and thirty-two employees that went to the EHP plan, and I calculated each one individually and provided them with what the savings was. It was a loss, and we're waiting to hear how that's going to impact whether or not we're going to get our four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars back. Hopefully, I'll have a different story to tell you on April twenty-fifth, when we adopt the real budget. So basically, the general fund tax levy, that big green piece of the revenue pie, by law, cannot exceed two percent. That is typically where we've been over the last several years. If we don't need the full two percent, they allow you to bank it, which means you can spend it in future years. Sadly, the four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars is gone forever. So our two percent tax levy year-over-year would have given us fifty-seven million, fifty-seven nine seventeen four thirty-eight. You back out the four sixteen, so our tax levy in this budget is fifty-seven million five oh one three eighty-seven, or one point two seven percent of the prior year's levy. There's no bank caps, and there, we didn't have any bank cap to offset any of this, and there were no other adjustments. The debt service fund, this is the great story we get to tell, because we've survived a twenty-five-year mortgage, and we've made our last payment. So the, the best part of this is the planning that has gone on for, for year after year in this district, and we're able to fund our capital projects internally. So in the near future, I don't see that there would be a referendum as we, and a need to raise taxes with another mechanism that we aren't able to condo within our own, own means as we plan our future capital projects. So there is a reduction in the tax levy of two million one hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred dollars. We do have reserve funds, that's some of what we were talking about. We have capital reserves where we're able to plan our future projects. We have maintenance reserves. These were really helpful when we had a, a, a pretty major expenditure due to Hurricane Ida, and we, we were able to take money out of maintenance reserves. We were able to get projects completed and students put back into place very quickly instead of having to wait for insurance money and instead of having to wait for FEMA. So we still have, we have received a bulk of the insurance money at this point, and our FEMA application is waiting for approval. So once all of that comes through, the money that we borrowed from maintenance reserve will be returned there for future emergencies. So that was really beneficial to us to have that reserve, if you will, to borrow against to be able to do our regular course of business. And then we are limited to what's in those funds. We've talked a little bit about it, long-range facility plan. What the long-range facility plan, it's like a roadmap of what we're allowed to have in capital reserves, and it's a, a planning document for the next five years. And that's something we're going to start looking at again, because we're at the end of that five, six-year period to look to see how we're going to plan for our, for our future going forward. And maintenance reserve is another one that's limited by what we can have in there by law based on the square footage of our buildings is really how they come up with that reserve The twenty-one, twenty-two budgeted projects, these are the projects that we had in last year's budget, but that are actually being done this summer. We are going through the process of upgrading the nine-ten science labs. We have money to do some upgrades for Twenty-First Century Classroom and Twenty-First Century Facility Room upgrades, which is our faculty, I'm so sorry. And that's being, that's on the agenda, both the science labs and the faculty room upgrades are on the agenda tonight to approve, to get started for this summer. We are working on some improvements to the varsity softball fields, which include some changes to the, the grading of, of the field as well as some softball dugouts. That's something that we're in the works. We have the, the, the plans are with the state of New Jersey, because that's in a, a wetter area, if you will, of our, of our campus, so we want to make sure we're within the, the guidelines and the DEP there. And we're also, the end of the month, we'll be opening bids for mobile classrooms, so the, the trailers will be removed, and we're putting, the, the mobile trailers will be removed, and we're putting in a storage facility there. So those are all things that were budgeted last year, they're in the works for this year, and they're going on this summer. And these are the projects that are in this year's budget that'll be tackled next summer. So we'll be repaving the IMC lot. Once we have the outbuilding in place, we're going to increase some outside seating for the nine-ten cafeteria space, some more Twenty-First Century Classroom upgrades, some more Twenty-First Century Faculty Room upgrades. We're looking to renovate a special education classroom. We are working on upgrading our fiber network as we move more towards being more secure for cybersecurity reasons in our, from our technology perspective. We have some money put aside for JV baseball field upgrades, and we also want to put in some more seating for the cafeteria, where we'll be removing the lockers and making those bench seats. So again, these are all things that are not funded by taxpayers at this point. It doesn't need a referendum. It comes directly out of our capital reserve funds. And if the numbers don't come in where they need to be, or as we start to go through the process, and we did it this year with a project, we decide to move it down on our plan a little bit, and we don't do it, and we don't take the money out of capital reserve. So this is just a planning tool, and it's planning in the doc, in, in the budget. So we plan the revenue and we plan the expense together. So our next steps is hopefully, we'll adopt the tentative budget this evening. It will go to the Department of Education tomorrow. It gets advertised in the newspaper on the twenty-first. By law, it needs to be advertised four days prior to your public hearing. The public hearing is scheduled for April twenty-fifth, which is the first available day for us to be able to do that. Once the presentation, or once the public hearing is done and it's adopted, the presentation and our user-friendly budget will all go up on the website within forty-eight hours, and then we certify the taxes with the County Port of Taxation. Once the budget is approved at the public hearing, it's done. I hope that was the last one. I think it's done with me.
Yeah, I'll just share some thoughts on top of Heather's great discussion of the Chapter Forty-four issue, and we're still hopeful that we get some of that money returned to us, but we have to just see how that process goes. Those cuts, that additional four hundred and some thousand, doesn't put us in such dire straits that we can't continue to guarantee top-notch, comprehensive programs here at Central and in a robust and beautiful facility, and not just maintaining that facility, but continuing to refresh it. And I want to talk quickly about that as well. We're very, very fortunate, you know, especially coming through the pandemic as we have, very, very fortunate with all of the extra expenses and all of the extra pressures on us to be able to, again, not just make ends meet, but continue to do innovative and expansive things. The thing that has to pause at this point, as we get to the bottom of what's going to happen next with this additional assessment, we've talked about the need and the desire here to expand some of our programs at Central for some of our students who are most at risk, and some of the students that we're most concerned about. We have some staffing and additional things that we've been looking at to add into the budget, not just to maintain, but to expand some of our programs. That's the stuff that we have to, we have to hold on for a little bit until we get to the bottom of this budget question. And that's very concerning to me. So I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to find room for those things as we move forward, regardless of the outcome of this appeal. But I do want you to know that the first things that we start to look at are, are those things that we've talked about expanding. And the, the thoughts about expanding some of those programs for our, our kids that we're most worried about is, is, is a concern for us right now. But I do, again, want to highlight how solid we are, especially, I mean, when you think about seventy-two acres, multiple major facilities on this campus. The conventional wisdom is always that when you pay off your debt service, you go right back out for more debt, because you need to. It's unheard of, I think, to be in a position to say we don't have to do that, that we can continue to innovate on our campus, refresh our facilities as, as we've done in here, add-on layers of security, do the necessary maintenance, like paving and the other things that have to be done, address some longstanding things that we've talked about for years, whether it's seating for students during lunch, or it's the condition of this field or that field, and also think about upgrades, Twenty-First Century upgrades to classrooms and faculty rooms. To be in the position to continue to do those things without having to go out for, for more debt service, it's just, it's incredible, and I just want to highlight that. So some bittersweet news in all of this tonight. Still some hope, but we have to see how that all plays out on Heather's appeal, and, and just do know that regardless, we're going to be all right, and, and our priorities are going to continue to guide us. But we have a pause in this moment as we thought, some of the revenue, or some of the lack of cut, rather, that we thought we were going to be able to sidestep is coming to roost in a way that has us pausing on our thoughts and our plans a little bit right now, but we're going to, we're going to hope for the best. So any questions for, for us, for Heather, or for?
I just had a quick question, and Heather, thank you for that really clear and comprehensive presentation. The capital reserve projects for this summer and next summer in the Twenty-First Century classrooms, which classrooms are those? Are those Ted, is that business? Can you just specify which classrooms?
So I can speak to that. So basically, the, it's part of the longer story of what we wanted to do in here. So the rooms that we've outfitted in here with flexible furniture, with fabrication in our makerspace, with additional technology, you know, the collaboration spaces through the middle of the IMC here. The thought here is that as we get to learn, as we learn how to use those spaces more effectively to replicate those spaces out in different areas of the school. And then also, in terms of faculty, how faculty work together here, replicating those workspaces out, out in other areas of the school. So it's not specific classrooms yet, it's going to be more about how is this space being used, which departments are really innovating with these different tools in here, and how can we create then more opportunity out about on campus for that to happen. One of the things I'd love to do is create more fabrication spaces across campus, but we just have to see how folks are using that in the coming months. A lot of it will be furniture and technology. We're not looking really at construction necessarily, so some of those costs for those upgrades aren't as much as they would be for, you know, deep construction in a room. So we'll have more as we, as we continue to assess with Jessica on how folks are using this space and what it teaches us for how to use spaces out there.
One minor point on Slide Sixteen. Is there a typo in one of those columns?
Maybe.
Okay.
Shouldn't be.
The year dates, you got twenty-one, twenty-two, and then again, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yes, absolutely. The second column is twenty-two, twenty-three. The second column is 22, 23.
That's what I thought, just wanted, just voting on this if I still have.
I'm so sorry.
And could I ask, I think, first of all, like, kudos to you and to the school, my time on the board. I've been continually impressed by the, the management of resources and the budget and how efficiently it's handled, so really, really impressed by that. When we talk about at-risk students, I know that we have programs in place, and I appreciate, Dr. Moore, that you, you noted how important that is. To that effect, it seems to me that, that, just the term at-risk, we might want to swap out some of these other projects. Yeah, no, no criticism or anything, just so important to serve these students, right?
Yeah, so at this time, there's a lot of planning going on about what different scenarios for expansion look like. And so I want to make sure that that planning is deliberate, is as deliberate and as detailed as possible, especially, you know, always, we want to make sure that we're planning to that level of, of detail to affect the kind of stewardship that we're always striving for. But in the face of cuts, we do end up having to go back to the drawing board a little bit and say, all right, well, what does this mean for us? And it does. It opens up examinations of where else then do we make room for this if we're able to do that? So it's, it can't all be an add if we're going to add in some of these things, and something else has to give in this context of some of the negative numbers that you're seeing. So again, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to continue to make the shifts that we need to make, not just for coming out of the pandemic, but the larger wellness and personalization priorities that we've had, you know, have to continue, the equity priorities have to continue. But right now, we have to figure out what the fate of this appeal process is and what that means for the budget before we can figure out exactly where we might have to redo some of our plans. And, and I agree, some of that, some of the work that we want to do in our, in our programs for those students who we're most worried about has to happen. But we have to make some tough choices about then what doesn't have to happen alongside of that. But I agree, there's, there's a significant priority there that's only exacerbated by, by our pandemic experience right now, yeah.
And I just want to clarify one other thing, I apologize. The money, when we talk about those projects, they're a different bucket of money, and, and I think it's important to understand the difference. Those are not general fund, funds. So we can't plug holes, for lack of a better word, in our general fund budget with reserve money. The only thing we can do is choose not to do those projects, but it just stays in reserve. It can't help with our $416,000 problem. They're completely separate. Those are our reserves that can only be withdrawn for specific reasons and specific needs.
For the past few years. I'm anticipating questions that have often come up from the public, and I'm interested too, in those reductions, contributions to savings. With less students, we require somewhere along the line, not less teachers, there's going to be less expenses. How are we accounting for the amount that we're saving and where are we applying that? Because not only is it prudent to do that, but we also have a public to answer to, and they will also spot that this is an area where we should be saving some money once we have a reduction in students of a certain amount, and it's down to the point now where over the, a number of all the years that you've shown, it's substantial.
So in ans- to answer that question, I think, yes, we are down students, and, and that's very clear when you take a look at of our, specifically just our student count information, but also please remember the reduction in our state aid of 1.2 million dollars. So we've been able, through attrition, if you look at this slide, over those last same years, we've been down a substantial number of students, but we're also down in state aid. And the reason we're able to still have the robust programming that we have is through attrition, whether teachers are leaving and not being replaced, or those types of things. Naturally, we've been able to sustain the programs that we have even with these substantial cuts. And a piece of it is because the declining enrollment. So some of those expenditures have gone down, but so is our funding. So the worst possible case scenario was if we had increasing enrollment and decreasing numbers, we'd be having a much different conversation here.
Very good answer, I like that.
And I'll say, the attrition has been a specific tactic here in addressing this. And so there have been a lot of positions that we haven't filled as a result of retirements, and we, we had gotten ahead of that a little bit at one point, seeing some of this declining enrollment continuing. I mean, we have to be nimble too, to the fact that as development increases around us, that we may start to see that number creep up again. But I, I'm confident that, that we're going to be able to, to handle either situation here. But definitely, as the aid decreases, the attrition has helped us match the, the outlay for staff alongside with those decreases. The other little piece in that is we, you know, going through negotiation years, as we're going through negotiation now, that becomes part of the, the calculus there. So how do we, how do we account for the future? I do think it's important, and I've been working with my colleagues in the K8s, to think about a more regional approach to understanding our demographics. We could do a demographic study and pay for that, but I think all of us would benefit from that. So that's something that we've begun to talk about, is what do the demographics, what do the demographers tell us, you know, about what's coming next? And just as we go forward, you know, getting a better picture of that across the county. So it's been up and down. The little bits and pieces that you can't see in there is as new kids come in, do they require different levels of services than our current students do? So a special ed student comes in is, is a much more, you know, requires much more services and a lot more resources from our budget than a general education student does. We're happy to do that, but these are things that you can't predict. And so that's a piece of it as well. Thanks.
Yeah, and if I could just add, I think, as we're talking about this, one of the real positive things is the work that's being done on curriculum and the personalization, those kinds of things really, I think, speak to at-risk students and really kind of, you know, still serve that population without, you know, putting aside a separate category for it. So I think that's hopeful.
Great, thank you.
All right, so, thank you. So I think that's it for my report. You do have a motion here to approve, I'm sorry, to affirm the HIB incident decisions that we talked about in closed session last time, our HIB suspension summary report is here as well with numbers. And then you'll, you'll be asked to vote on the tentative budget in the operations and transportation section of the agenda, so that'll come up in the agenda later. So with that, I turn it back to you, Mrs. Hughes, thank you. Thank you, Heather.
Yep, thank you, Heather and Dr. Moore. Okay, can I have a motion to affirm HIBs 30 through 37, please? So I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to our first resonance forum for agenda items only. If there's anyone here to speak on an item on the agenda, I was going to say, please come up to the podium. I don't see anybody. Okay. So we'll move right into committee reports. Mr. Richard, do we have an update from student life?
Yeah, there's only one item on tonight's agenda for approval, and that is tuition and transportation for special ed student to Hampton Academy as shown on the agenda. So with that, I'd like to move this item for approval tonight.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion on that item? Nope, hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Nickel, do we have an update for ONT?
Yes, ONT met on Tuesday, March 15th. We discussed some summer projects, a couple of which we're going to approve tonight, plus some flood remediation things. We have a grant and a few donations that we're moving to accept. Two of the, two of the construction projects, the 910 science lab upgrade and the 910 faculty room upgrade, looking to award the SAPIO construction for those two projects. We're also making a donation of 10 used Chromebooks to the VFW Post 5119 in Glen Gardner for veterans' use. We have a nursing shared services agreement that, that Heather had talked about as well. Coordinated transportation agreement with the SCESC for the 2022, 2023 school year. Basically, all our items as shown on the agenda, and with that, I'd like to move items I-1 through I-14.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on these items? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Personnel, Mr. Davidson, do you have an update?
Yes, we have six items on the personnel agenda tonight. The first is a retirement, are some retirements, particularly Linda Ruffregal has 24 years and she's retiring as a science, consumer science teacher, all right? And then we have resignations. We have one resignation, Janine Calhoun, an English teacher who also happens to be the girls' soccer coach, and she is going to be head coach at Ursinus College at the college level full-time. So good luck to her. Proves how successful we've been here with the soccer program. And then we have contractual appointment, Michaela Smith as Information Systems Technical Assistant. And then we have some proctors, monitors, and test coordinators, not many of them, three of them. And finally, oh, not finally, but next, a bunch of professional development courses that we're going through, particularly some people taking anti-bullying training. We have a, a new anti-bullying specialist coming on, and, and Ed Brand is getting refreshed in anti-bullying, he's taking his, because he's, took it so long ago, I guess the laws have changed, so we have to, we have to let him get up to date and, and go back around again. And finally, we've created a school counseling specialist, a new system as recommended by the superintendent. Any comments on that, Dr. Moore?
Yes, so let me say a few things about a couple of items. So go ahead and make the motion, and then in discussion, I'll, I'll.
Well, I move, I will move items one through six under Personnel.
Second. I have a motion in a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, a few things. So I want to make sure that our new family consumer science teachers know that they're supposed to send things up to my office like challah bread and, and soda bread. I just want to make sure that continues. So Mr. Brand, Ms. Cangelosi-Hayde, who is probably listening tonight, need to help, help our new folks. But yeah, we're going to miss Linda, who's been here, you know, as a mainstay in that department. And Ms. Calhoun as well, Coach Calhoun, Ms. Calhoun, depending on which context you're addressing her in, wish her all the best. That's an amazing opportunity and well-deserved for the success that she's had here. As we get into the professional development opportunities, yes, some additional help on the anti-bullying specialist front. You know, we've talked about that quite a bit over the course of the year, both in open and closed session, the need just to have another pair of hands helping out in there. And we're looking forward to, as Ed goes through the training again, to think about some, some policy changes that we might be able to make in, in line with some recent changes in the law. So Ed's going to get a lot of updates on some of the more recent changes in the law that might lead us to adjust our, our, our processes there a little bit, not just for efficiency's sake, but also to align with the best understandings of how those things should flow in the current, current iterations of the law. The counseling specialist position here, we are continuing some work there to get the right levels of support in our counseling office. We have had a couple of retirements in there, so we had a registrar, home instruction coordinator who retired, and we have an executive assistant who's retiring in there, and we've replaced those two positions with these counseling specialist positions. It's, it's either a wash, or depending on the hiring, it ends up with some savings for the board, but it's, it's just creating a, a, a better lay of the land for the skills and, and the needs in that office with, with folks who, who are going to be able to take on coordination of projects there in, in the wake of these two, these two folks who have been long-term employees who, who are retiring this year. So with the creation of the second position there, we're done tinkering with the support structures there in, in the counseling office.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments on Personnel? Nope, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell, do we have an update on racism equity in diversity committee? Anything to report?
Sure. So I think at the last meeting, there was an update on the fact that the survey interview process with other schools who have done this work is complete now. The larger committee met last week for a debriefing on that information to debrief and distill what was collected and, and learned in those interviews. And this week, the committee is scheduled to meet with legal counsel for some guidance around any important legal aspects in the creation of this type of policy. So the development phase is, is underway, and I look forward to updating you on the next steps.
Thank you. Do we have any additional board business at this time? Nope. Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to our second resonance forum for general comments. Anybody interested in speaking? You have five minutes, come up to the podium, state your name and municipality. Nope, crickets. Okay, and move on to board comments. Any board comments to wrap up? Okay, we're going to convene into executive session to discuss HIBs, is that the only? For half an hour, so with no action to be taken upon return. Thanks.